Good evening, everyone. Please stand for the pledge and then remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have Brad from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Are you here? No? Okay, we just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Roll call, please. Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Vice Mayor LaCron.
Present.
Councilmember Sharnow.
Here.
Councilmember Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Magazine.
Here.
Councilmember Spelitch.
Present.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that I'm sad to say that we all lost a great community leader here, Mayor Sharon Morgan. We're thinking of her family and her friends and her colleagues and we're looking to early January, I think, for an opportunity to gather and celebrate her life. Please note that in light of Sharon's passing, we're going to be postponing tonight's presentation by the Chamber Director, Betsy Lavoy, and we'll do that at a future meeting. And also just for housekeeping, we are removing item 7E regarding an equipment purchase. Thank you. Next, we have reports by mayor, council members, and town manager. Have anything? Anybody? Grady? Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to report, we, our Noon Kuanis Club, held our annual breakfast with Santa event on early December, first Saturday, and it was kind of kicks off the, well, I guess the Thanksgiving Day break kind of kicks off the holiday season, but it was the same day as Stroll in the Glow, and the town helps sponsor that event. We have it over at the community center and had like 250 people there, so went very well. And, you know, speaking of Mayor Morgan, we, several of us were at the incorporation celebration luncheon last week. I'm sure you'll talk more about it, but it was good to see some of the former mayors who were there and council members. It was a good time and thanks for organizing that and having it, so.
Thank you, Mike. Other activities? David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The mayor and myself attended the Pearl Harbor Memorial at the American Legion, and I also attended a ceremony in Phoenix, Pearl Harbor Day, very close to me, that my father had just finished his aviation training when the Japanese bombed Pearl Harbor. And a short time after the attack, he was sent to Pearl Harbor and assigned to the Pacific Fleet where he served as a pilot. So that day was always very solemn in my home. And the mayor and I went to the ceremony, and so, thanks for going and very touched. Thanks.
Thank you for getting me there. I was wandering around town a little bit. I thought it was outside, so, thank you. I just had a mag regional council meeting, and as usual, talk about infrastructure and transportation. The Noon Kuanis Breakfast, I just wanted to mention that we honored Donna Yorty because I think for the 17 years that they've been doing it or so, it was originally her idea, so that, we surprised the heck out of her. It was nice. Stroll in the Glow was great. Again, that is sort of an unofficial launch of the 50th anniversary year. It was beautiful. The rain held off almost all the whole time. It started towards the end of the evening. And as Mike mentioned, we had a wonderful lunch with the original mayor, John Cotello, three original staff members, including Cassie Hansen, who was also councilperson. It was very meaningful, and we missed Sharon. She was planning on being there, so, but she was there in spirit. I also was able to go to the open house that our new volunteer coordinator had at the community center, and that was very nice, and there were some goodies there. And last, speaking of that, I was able to go to Fountain View Village and judge their gingerbread house, Village, luckily, I hope, hopefully, anonymously, but it wasn't just me, so, but it was, it was really nice, and they have like a gingerbread village, and then they're going to be doing some really fun things tomorrow, too. So, that's it for my stuff. Anything else? No? Yes, Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that, and to point out in recognition of the first responders' Christmas tree, I went to see it last night along the center of our main avenue there, and they did a great job. I was really impressed.
It was pretty.
In honor of them, I just wanted to mention it.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Our next item is a presentation that I know is near and dear to the vice mayor. It's Speak Up, Save a Life, it's Stand Up, Speak Up, Save a Life Month, and Sherri's going to do the honors, and we will be presenting to Gina Godby-Hare, who's the co-founder of the organization.
Thank you, Mayor. It is an honor to present this to my wonderful friend Gina Godby-Hare, who is a co-founder of the organization, and I'll go down now and read the proclamation.
Thank you.
Do I need to speak into this, or?
I guess I'll just be loud. If you could.
Whereas the Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life movement presents an ideal opportunity to help bridge the gap between young people, our local community, government, and law enforcement in a positive way. And whereas our local schools are facing preventable suicides and tragedies that may include warning signs in person or online, but bystanders or friends remain silent among threats or cries for help. And whereas our young people can be empowered to report concerning posts or comments to school representatives or law enforcement, and adults can receive training to help spread the message that it is okay to care enough to speak up, stand up, and save a life. And whereas more than 3,000 Arizona students from 120 public charter, private, and tribal schools have learned the message and created student-led impact projects in their schools and communities. Is that it? So now I would like to present, on behalf, on behalf of the Town of Fountain Hills, we do hereby proclaim January 2020 as Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life Month.
Thanks. Thank you so much. Next, we have a recognition of a very special person who's been a member of the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission, and we want to thank him and also present him with a plaque. So I'll read what we have, and then we'll come down, Bill. Bill Myers. He began serving on the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission in January of 2008. He was appointed chairman of the commission on January 27, 2009, and has served as chair since. Bill has dedicated over 11 years to McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission. During his time on the commission, he served on the preserve, marketing, and fairs, and trailheads work groups. He's been an active advocate for Fountain Hills Preserve, as well as a longtime advocate for our Adaro Canyon Trailhead. Though Bill may be transferring out of the commission, we believe he will still have an active role in the preserve. Bill Myers has been a valuable member of the commission, and we thank you so much for your time and overwhelming dedication.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank Bill and make a motion that we not accept his resignation.
Give you that, and if you want to say a few words, that'd be awesome.
I'd love to.
All right, thank you. So it doesn't say all that stuff on it, but there you go. You'll have to memorize it.
All right, sounds good. Picture?
A lot of them, huh? Yes, thank you. It's really been an honor and a privilege to have been associated with the MMPC, McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission. And I'm just thrilled to death that the preserve is purchased, and you're right, I've been on that commission for a long time. I've been on the conservancy board also for a while, and they're the guys I call the blood, sweat, and tear guys, so they really do a lot of work on that thing. I also want to say, I'm just a small part of the last 25 years in making the preserve and the two trailheads work. There's been a lot of people involved, the late Sharon Morgan, the late Roy Kinsey, many people over the last 25 years. This council, this mayor, prior councils, prior mayors, the staff, current staff and prior staff, it's just been great, and that's why we have. I wanted to thank a few other people, so I made a list. Actually, it's a list of something else, but that just shows that there are really a lot of people that are involved with this project, and hopefully, we can continue to keep involved and make that preserve be a preserve for a long time. It's a big chunk of ground, 1,022 acres. Our fountain park is about 45 acres, I think, so if you have 22 fountain parks right next to each other, that's how big our preserve is. It's a big chunk of ground. I predict in the second quarter of 2020, we'll be able to have access to the Adaro Canyon Trailhead and have our town and other folks come up and enjoy that preserve. It's fun, you can hike, you can bike, you can picnic. There's four picnic tables up there, seat four apiece, and we just need to preserve the preserve. So again, thank you, it's been my honor and privilege. I appreciate it.
There were a lot of people.
Well, there were, for many, many years. You're so right about that. I remember when we first started with that, we didn't have the same kind of technology we have now. We took all these pictures and put them up on the wall, all the way on, I think we were in the Kuanis Building or wherever we were, so, yeah, it's a long time coming, and we really appreciate everything you've done.
Keep it going.
We will, we will. We have our next is the presentation on the general plan 2020, so we're, oh, that'll be John. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, council, let me do the last little push of the buttons here. I'm sorry, didn't get this done sooner to get to the presentation itself. So, Mayor, council, as you know, we are in the process of working on updating the general plan for the Town of Fountain Hills. We've been working on this process for a little over a year now. The first slide we have here just kind of brings us back into where we are in that process. We've been gathering public input, we've worked on initial draft of the plan. That draft, full draft plan, has been out and available to the public for a little over a month now. Little notebook of the entire plan document. We are in the process of getting comments on that and making adjustments to this initial draft. We will have a final draft in January, and then go through the rest of the approval process, so I'll talk about a little bit more later. The plan document, just a quick outline of how it's divided up. First section gives us the background introduction, sets the vision, and then, as we talked about before, establishes three basic components for the plan, our neighborhoods, our environment, and our economy, and so the rest of the plan, the bulk of it, is dealing with those three topics. And then the last section is the plan implementation that talks about how we do major minor amendments and sets forth some very specific steps that we can do to implement the plan. As we've gone through the process, as I mentioned, we started with some citizen involvement input into the plan. Several sessions were held where citizens had the opportunity to provide some of their thoughts about what would be important in the plan. This is one slide that shows some of the feedback that was received at one of those meetings, and what I want to do here, the next few slides, is just take a few of these items that came up from the citizens and show how they were included in the plan. And again, these are, again, just going to be a few of the items, and only a few of the places where they come up in the plan. I'd be here too long if we tried to discuss every way in which these different items were covered in the plan. But one that's been very important to our citizens is to protect our residential neighborhoods. So again, here are two ways in which we've specifically tried to address that topic in the citizens' concerns, within the thriving neighborhoods element of the plan. There's a goal about maintaining the thriving neighborhoods and a policy about protecting those existing neighborhoods, another goal about maintaining the quality of the neighborhoods, and again, one of the policies that deals with that. Again, there's several other examples I could pull up, but just to show an example of how these items were considered and addressed. Another one of the comments back on that list from the citizen input is we need to revitalize our town center. This is largely addressed through the thriving environment, great places portion of the plan, with, again, a specific goal and policy about the town center and attracting development and promoting that area. And then within the character area plan, there's a specific piece on the town center as its own character area with some ideas about how we continue to promote and develop the town center. Define Fountain Hills economic identity. We know the economy in Fountain Hills is very important to us and continuing to grow our economy, so again, there's a whole element dealing with that. So again, just a couple of the goals, policies related to that particular topic, and how we might address that issue and that topic for the town. I think this is the last one I included, maintain improved bike lanes, sidewalks, so connectivity, access, mobility portion of the thriving environment. Again, a goal and a policy related to that, to develop that system, and another goal on keeping the traffic counts up to date, so we can understand where safety issues are and how to improve the roadway system. Since releasing the draft document back in, again, on early November, we held a stakeholder meeting on the 20th of November to give our stakeholders, specific group of citizens very involved in the community, an opportunity to come in and review the plan with us and give us their comments and feedback. And so this is, again, just a sample of some of the things that came from that discussion, and some of the ways that we are taking those comments that we received at that meeting to update and amend the plan, to address those things that were mentioned, and respond to those citizens. Following the stakeholder meeting, we also held then just a general public open house. We had a few, it was a very rainy night, kind of not a great night to be out. We had 12 citizens show up and, again, reviewed the plan with them and discussed different aspects of it with them. Some of their thoughts were largely directed towards the vision and some of the health-related issues and how we can promote the town as a place for people to come and enjoy the recreation aspects. So we're looking at ways we can emphasize that a little more in the plan. We've also had some discussion about some of the architectural treatment, and we've received an email about the same topic since then, so we're looking at how we can address those topics better in the plan. So next steps, where we are, again, the plan is available online for anybody who would like to look at it. We have copies available at the library in the community center. We had a request from the chamber to have one available over there. We have it copied, we'll be getting it to them later this week. We're taking emails, letters, I'm attending any meetings that anybody wants to have. We've got a couple coming up to talk about the plan, get people further information, receive their comments. The internal staff technical advisory committee has been reviewing the draft and providing feedback to the consultant. So again, with this process coming up, we'll keep working with the consultant, any comments that we receive, and adjusting the plan to best address the concerns and interests and needs of the town. We will get a final draft of that document late January, early February. At that point, the state statutes require that we go into what's called a 60-day review period, where we will send the plan out to a lot of different state agencies, county agencies, surrounding jurisdictions, as well as being available to citizens, and give them 60 days to provide any final comments to the plan. We'll hold another stakeholder meeting during that time. We'll hold a public hearing before the P&amp;Z commission during that time, and see what comments we get on that draft plan. We will then make any adjustments we need to, to the plan document that are appropriate at that point, and to have a final document then to take to P&amp;Z for their final public hearing and recommendation onto this council. Council can then hold a public hearing in May. We do need council to take action by their first meeting in June to meet the statutory requirements for getting this put on the ballot in November. So that's where we are in the process. Just wanted to give you that update. Be glad to visit with any of you who have comments about it, need further information about the plan, getting that feedback at this point, because this is a key time to get that feedback. Once we start that 60-day review process, changes, substantive changes to the plan become more of a challenge and stay on the timeframe.
Thank you very much, John. I was just thinking about that. We were there for the first meeting, and the sky just opened up, so it was, it was an interesting evening, but we were lucky that we had 20 or so at ours and less, because I think it just kept raining after that. But there are good opportunities for more input. Anybody have any questions for John or any comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Grady.
Just, just one thing. The last time we had this presentation, it was prior to the stakeholder meetings and also prior to council really getting their feet wet with this whole process, and I wanted to let you know, I feel very confident with the feedback we've been getting from the citizens on this. You recall, the last time this came before the council, there were some concerns about economic development and how was this addressing economic development? There's a number, when you dive into this, there are a number of policy statements that I think are consistent with both our strategic plan and our council's vision on economic development. So if you get into the plan itself, I think you're going to be very satisfied that, that staff is listening, and then you're also getting some good feedback from residents on it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. There were a couple of references in your presentation on architecture, and I'm just wondering, especially downtown, it looks like, and, you know, there's one sentence in here, "Architecture should be consistent with the town's small-town feel," and I'm just kind of wondering what, what that looks like and how to, you know, I mean, the downtown's evolved over the last 40-plus years. Obviously, there's a mix of all kinds of architecture down there, so are we talking about the vacant land that's left, or, I mean, how do, how do we apply something like this from the general plan to the downtown?
Mayor, council, that's, that's a good question, and one that will probably be fleshed out a little bit more with one of the implementation policies, to really see where that goes. But from my tenure here, I see some of the newer development, maybe that's a little bit more modern, that's happened downtown, that isn't maybe quite consistent with the history and the direction the towns wanted to go, and so it's kind of looking at that without getting too prescriptive, mostly for new development or major facelifts that might take place to, to keep a look and feel in the downtown that's getting more consistent with a small town than a major metropolitan-type area, if that makes sense. But again, exactly what form that will take, again, that'll be an implementation step that would happen later.
John, this is not for you, but you can have a seat if you want. The mayor will lay.
No, I won't.
About two months ago, I had a discussion with town manager and our director of economic development about a concept that I've been thinking about for quite some time, and bear with me, this is going to take a few minutes. I've also mentioned it to the mayor. About eight years ago, as a member of SPAC, I made a presentation to SPAC about a concept called Clusters of Innovation. And for those of you who are not schooled in the definition of clusters, clusters are a conglomeration of companies that have something in common. There are about 160 clusters in the United States, and what I'm reporting on is coming out of a study that I was involved in for two years at the Council on Competitiveness. So there are about 160. You have an oil and gas cluster, you have a lumber cluster, you have an aerospace cluster, you might have a medical device cluster, and so on and so forth. And they don't recognize boundaries, so they can overlap a local jurisdiction, they can overlap a state, and whatever. Innovation is the key to success anywhere. We are the most innovative country in the world. We have more, many more Nobel laureates than any other country in the world, and that's because of innovation. The innovation comes about, and I'm going to, you're going to wonder where I'm going with this, I'll let you know. Innovation comes about when people talk to each other. So for example, let's say you have an aerospace cluster in Texas, and Texas has about, I don't know, six, eight, 10 clusters. Well, you may have a main company, a Boeing, for example, but that attracts all kinds of other subsidiary kinds of companies that manufacture, that feed things into that main company. And how do they find out about what they're going to innovate on? They, they do it by knowing each other. They play golf together, they have dinners together, they may have products that are very different from each other, but they talk about it, and what comes out of it is innovation, the idea for a new product. I have been thinking for quite some time that Fountain Hills is ripe to become a cluster, not in the technical sense, but in a general sense. There is no community in the state, I would dare say, of any size that has the number and types of healthcare and wellness facilities that we have. Nobody. They may have them scattered around, but they're not in proximity to each other, and people aren't necessarily talking to each other, they're not necessarily innovating. Just a brief recitation of some of the assets we have in this town. We're going to have a new hospital, the Sonoran Preserve and hiking opportunities, bike lanes, the turkey trot and 5K runs, school sports programs, dark sky designation, a medical campus, a dialysis center, fitness centers, community center programs, healthy living support groups, multitude of volunteer opportunities, and good weather nine months out of the year. And this just is the tip of the iceberg. There is no other, I would dare say, there's no other community that I know of that has anything like this. And so what I proposed to the town manager and director of economic development is that we have been talking, as long as I've been on the council, and even when I was at SPAC, on branding. How do we brand this town? How do you describe this town? We have a beautiful fountain, but that's not branding. I mean, how many pictures of the fountain can you see? People come out and they look at the fountain for 10 minutes and they say, is that all there is? Let's go on to something else. I'm suggesting that we look seriously at branding Fountain Hills as what I'm calling a wellness community. This is not for old people, it's for everybody, young and old. It's something that I think would hold us in good stead. I think it also would generate, we want economic development, there are lots of things we don't have related to healthcare, companies, small companies that could move in here. So we'd have to brand it, we'd have to let people know about it, we'd have to advertise it, and so on. I could go on, but I won't, and I'll simply say that, and I'm not making any motions, but I would like to see town manager and our director of economic development at least think about a path forward. For example, the creation of some kind of a task force. It might be made up of members of SPAC, it could be Vision Fountain Hills, it could be, out of the chamber, other groups. It doesn't happen overnight. It's something that takes time, takes careful study, and takes the willpower to make it happen. So I thought this was an appropriate time, given the report we just got, to at least bring this before the council for any discussion you might want to have.
Thank you. Any further comments on the general plan or to respond to Councilman Magazine? No?
Was that impressive, huh?
Well, I'll say one thing, we, we've talked a lot about branding and wrestling with, you know, what we are, but, so I'll agree with you that this is a, something definitely to be looked at, explored, it's very viable, it's already, like you're saying, kind of halfway there. We also have half marathons here, and I remember during, last year, talking to somebody about Spartan races and places where they could train, and they have the other games, which, forgive me, I'm forgetting the name of them, that the young women come and play from Fort McDowell, there's a name to them. But anyway, it's not, you know, certainly not anything that's unusual or not, that doesn't go along with what we're doing. The only thing I'm going to slightly object to is they go to the fountain and look at it and leave. I mean, you know, I've lived here 36 years. To me, when someone says, what's Fountain Hills? It's a beautiful, natural hometown, and I don't know how much has to be more branded, you know, as far as like a strictly branding something. I know I talked to James a little bit about this, and, because partly, when I know I talked to James a little bit, bit about this, and, because partly when you live here, it's like, because it's a, it's a beautiful scenic, you know, it's one-of-a-kind, unique, that's what it is. I had to tell you, I've been to a lot of activities over the last several months, and a lot of them were in Phoenix or in other places. And when they say, they see the thing, "Fountain Hills?", oh my God, that's the most beautiful place. Oh, I love going there and, but running and the things like you're saying. So I'm with you on, on going forward with, with anything like that and working with James and with Grady and Jody and anybody that wants to incorporate that into what we're doing. But we do more than just go to the fountain and leave. Anything?
How many companies have come because of the fountain?
Well, people come, residents come, they, they move here because they want to be here, but that's, we're not here to have a debate or anything, but yeah. You're here. Anyway, any other comments on, for John or about the general plan at all? No?
Not yet.
Thank you, John, not yet. Okay, thank you. Next, we have our call to the public. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. The first is Rose Anoudi. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. We're here tonight to ask the council...
You've got a good culture, doesn't that get them right?
Is this better? Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. We're here tonight to ask council to have the staff further review the hospital project after hearing our concerns. I'm here as the point person for the neighbors directly adjacent to the property, which is the hospital on Saguaro and Trevino. Every time I have tried to contact them, I was told that I would, they would meet with us, but after they get the permits, if you please look at the text message between the project manager and myself, which shows all he was concerned with is getting the permit first, then meeting with us. We all know what would happen after they get the permit. There's nothing we can do. I urge you to reconsider issuing permits prior to them coming back. I'm really upset about this. I'm just 150 feet away. I'm not quoting, but close to that. I begged them, I'm not going to go off, I begged them to come and at least show me how this would affect, just to keep ignoring us when we stood here in front of all of you months ago, supporting them. Really, the neighbors have asked, have not asked for much. And the buffer between them and us, they plan to go after they get the permit, to get a waiver and do no walls. I just hope that you guys would consider not issuing those permits prior. You just said beautiful things, all of you, about Fountain Hills and how beautiful it is and why people want to come here. I just cannot see anyone making a right there and there's a building that is not gorgeous to look at. So I really ask you to consider those permits not be issued unless they come back and bring something that's acceptable for you to even drive by. Thank you very much.
Next one is Jane Bell. Take your time. Hi.
It's part of getting old, I guess. We are here tonight to kindly ask you to ask the staff to further review all the facts of this hospital issue after hearing us tonight. I am Jane Bell, and I'm here to address the mitigation traffic issues on Trevino with regard to the hospital project. This road works, needs to be completed all at once, not in phases as proposed by the developer. Widening only to McDonald's interest in Phase 1 will only push the parking and the traffic further on Trevino and around onto Burquemo. Why should the nearby residents and businesses have to suffer multiple construction projects as Trevino is improved in phases? Dirt, noise, traffic disruption, more than once. The whole road makes it unsafe, and cars and trucks are forced to use Burquemo and Monterey through our residential area. As you see from the text messages, the developer isn't interested in meeting with us until they get permits, then it's too late. All they want is permits. It's up to you to make them do what they said they would do. The building or the road are not acceptable to Fountain Hills. They won't take suggestions from our planning and zoning. They want the cheapest development they can get. I have seen the drawings and followed them and asked of them what you should do. They ignore the planning and zoning and us. You all are the only ones they will listen to. It's up to you to hold them accountable for working with our town and the neighbors. Make them do what's right for Fountain Hills. Please don't issue a permit for that building or the Trevino construction. No permits until the promises to the neighbors are kept and the suggestions of the town planners are followed. No permits by the end of the year. If you don't stand up, the neighborhood will. This is important and to be done right. Please help us. Thank you. Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you, you too. The last one is Larry Myers.
Hi.
Hi. Sad that I have to be standing here over this. And I'm not going to stand here and repeat what was in my letter to everyone on December the 10th. That letter about sums up the situation with the hospital project as we stand here tonight. I've received one written response from y'all, though the letter didn't request one, so that's okay. But I assure you in that letter, that's an accurate play-by-play description of the game. I've studied the entire submittal by this developer, the doctors, and will be in possession of the remainder of the file of the project in the future. I can only imagine that since their attitude towards the neighbors is arrogant, so is it with the town. Just for the record, I'm the one that convinced those people to not oppose that hospital. Not a single one of them wanted it in their backyard. But as I explained to them, it was a decent use of the property, it was potentially valuable asset to the town, and if designed properly, it would mentally impact their properties and be aesthetically pleasing to the entrance of the town. And this was everything that was promised by those doctors. And now, nothing could be further from the truth. You can see from the text from the neighbors' point person that the communication's been cut off, and there's only one concern: getting those permits. There's no need to work, the doctors know that once they get the permits, there's no need to work with the citizens or with the town for the betterment of the town. Their intention is to build this as, quote, "cheaply as possible," unquote, their words, not mine. They have stated that not getting their permits by the end of the year will have a major financial implications to them, and their finances are of no concern to us, nor should it be to the town. I'm holding in my hand what our town planners gave to them long ago entitled "Design Suggestions." Some are better than others, but all are far superior to what they propose. And none of the town's suggestions would I label a piece of crap, as I did in my letter of 1210. These developers have obviously ignored all, and this, and this and more, as I comb through their proposed plans. The neighbors who once backed these guys are deeply disappointed in this group. But we're hoping to limit the disappointment to them by speaking to you and have not, and not to extend it to town as well. In closing, for the record, we object. We have no financial limitations for seeing what was promised is delivered. We have no doubts that this is, at this late date, there will be pain to the doctors to deliver what they promised. But if this is billed as currently proposed, the Trevino neighbors are prepared to deliver some serious pain.
Thank you, Larry.
Can I have like one more sentence?
One more?
I'm, they, they didn't take very long. I'm certain that the town probably has labeled me a kook in private. So be it, no matter. This kook speaks for thousands of voters, I assure you. And our friend, Mr. Vassalaro, he wrote the book on how this is going to be written up. And I truly hope that it's written up as Councilman Brown intended back in June.
Larry, we're, we're out of time. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. That's it? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll definitely be discussing this further.
I could just comment.
Oh, sure.
Mr. Myers, normally, we don't really comment on speakers that come up on a non-adjourned item, but I do want to let you know, I did forward your letter that was received by the council to the applicant here, and they did commit to having two open public meetings in January. I know that you want to have the permit process stopped, but they are committed to meeting with you folks. I believe they have some tentative dates. They're committed to trying to listen to all of you, what you have to say, but I just want to let you know, it didn't fall on deaf ears. We did forward on your, your letter, and they actually responded to your, your points, and I'd be happy to forward that letter on to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Want to talk to Grady?
Yes.
Grady, I would appreciate it if the council could be notified some period in advance before any permits are let.
I mean, I, my understanding of the permitting process, and perhaps Mr. Wesley can correct me if I'm wrong, or Mr. Miller, but although notifying would be an option, would you want to make clear that this permit issuing is an administrative process? But if the council wishes to be notified, it would just be in advance of an administrative process, not subject to council approval?
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't know how far we can go with this, Aaron.
Well, the, under the statute, we're, the council's permitted to respond to criticism, ask staff to review a matter, or ask that a matter be placed on a future council agenda. So if we stay within those boundaries.
Okay, Mike?
Well, what is the process? I know the applicant has to come back to the council for, what, special use permit? Is that?
That's the only thing.
So they can get a billing permit before the special use?
Yes, and that's, that's, that's actually the normal, but I'm going to have Mr. Wesley kind of describe it, because my understanding is the special use permit does kind of take in some additional factors prior to its issuance. Mr. Wesley, do you want to describe that process?
Yes, Mayor and council, the, the determination of the council back in June, the hospital is a permitted use in the C1 zoning district, so they have been pursuing getting their site plan approval and their building permit approval. What they will need in order to really operate as a hospital is to be able to be open all night. Currently, in the C1 district, businesses have to close by 11:00 PM and can't open until 7:00 AM. So they'll be applying for that special use permit so they can keep those hours. They have determined to take that risk to go ahead and get their building permit in place before applying for that special use permit, but that will come back to you. Part of that special use permit by code is that the site plan accompany the special use permit. What that will mean in this case, I haven't really stopped to try to figure out if we've already issued a building permit for the site plan, I'm not sure what role the council really had to make any adjustments at that time, but it will be part of the consideration of the special use permit. In addition, by code, they are required to have an eight-foot wall along their property line adjacent to the residential neighborhood. They are showing that on their building permit plans and will be required to build that wall. However, it's been our understanding from the neighbors that some of them don't really want an eight-foot wall that close to their properties, and so they're willing to apply to the Board of Adjustment for a variance, so we can adjust the size and location of that wall to meet the neighbors' desires, if that eight-foot wall really doesn't work in that location. So that'd be another public hearing process if it turns out to be a desire of the neighbors to have that wall moved.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
I'm sorry, let Dennis go.
Yes, Dennis.
Mr. Myers, I will let you know that when I received your letter, I had that conversation with the town manager, and I did not know that he had received a response back from the applicant, or I would have been very insistent on getting it over to you as well. But I understand that Grady will do that now. But the day I received your letter, I did in fact address it with the town manager.
Super. Super. Aren't you looking for a better-looking building?
Mayor?
Thank you. Yes?
I'd like to ask John a question. Where'd he go? You're hiding, John.
Almost got him.
I've heard, I've heard it stated a few times that the developers, the owners, want this wrapped up by the end of the year. Have they said anything about that?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Magazine, they have told us the financing that they have in place is due to, need to be renegotiated if the permit's not issued by the first year.
Yeah, I've heard that story before.
Aaron?
Yes, Mayor.
The applicant hasn't had an, doesn't know we're going into this level of discussion, so I'm a little uncomfortable with it.
At, at this point, Mayor, if, if the council has no more comments, I believe it would be appropriate to continue this discussion.
To what?
To continue the discussion, to a later date.
Thank you. Yeah, we're kind of getting a little far here. Thank you. We have a consent agenda next. Does anybody want to take anything off, or can I get a motion for approval?
Move it forward.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Our, our regular agenda item, the first one is consideration of appointment to the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission. Can I please have a motion to approve the appointment of Janice Holden to the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission with a term ending October 31st, 2020?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is Janice here?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for applying, and thank you to the subcommittee that did the interviews, and for all applicants. Thank you so much. Next, we have the item of a contract for flooring at the library. Grady?
Actually, we, we missed the public hearing on the proposed development impact fees.
Oops, where's that? Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, all my writing here. I will open a hearing on development impact fee report. Sorry about that. Grady?
Yes. Mayor and council, you recall, we've had our consultant before the council with the proposed development impact fees. Tonight, there is actually no action taken on this item. It is only to accept public comment, and if there's no public comment, my understanding is you'd just be closing this tonight, and then it will come back at a later time for action. So this is, this is all following the, the state law as it relates to the prescription on how development impact fees are to be adopted. Our finance director is available if you have any further questions about this, but we have, the report is before you in the packet, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have as well about this item.
Thank you. Do we have speaker cards? We have no speaker cards. Do we have any comments from council?
She, I think she opened.
No? So I close the hearing? Close the hearing, and then we're done, because we're not doing any votes? Okay. Thank you. Now flooring. Is that your, Grady, or?
Yes. This is a, a capital replacement item that we have in the budget for the Fountain Hills Library. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our facilities manager, Raymond Reese, who will give you a brief overview of this project. Mr. Reese?
Thank you, Grady. Mayor and council, the carpeting over at the library is in definite need of repair. It's a tile type of carpet that's glued down to a concrete subgrade, and the, the carpet is starting to peel at the edges, and it's causing a trip hazard over there. We've got it taped down a little bit, but there is a moisture problem in the, in the concrete over there. We reviewed the drawings, and there is no vapor barrier underneath the concrete, so it's allowing moisture to seep through the carpet. And a while back, the industry standards for adhering carpet to the concrete was just a, it was a petroleum base, and now they are using a water-based product, and mixing that with the moisture in the concrete doesn't allow the carpeting to properly adhere to the, to the concrete. So it definitely needs to be... So it definitely needs to be replaced. The approximate cost of that is $127,000. It's going to take about three to four weeks to do the work over there. We're probably going to have to close the library. We're looking for alternative means for the library to continue smaller operation. They're looking for space now. So with that, I will answer any questions.
Thank you, Raymond. Questions? Councilman?
Thank you, Raymond. Do we have any idea what is causing the water problem?
Mayor, councilman, from what I'm told from the vendor, and they did core samples over at the community center, and we had to do that for the classrooms when we replaced the tile over there. They did a core sample, and it showed very high moisture content, and they think it's just seeping up through the ground itself. It's not a leak in the building, because all of the utilities, the water is overhead, so there's no inherent leak into the foundation itself. So it's just coming up through the concrete. Now, there is a vapor barrier that is in the community center lobby under that tile, but they never put it in where the carpet areas are.
Thank you.
Raymond, we also are having issues at the community center as well.
Oh, absolutely. That's where we first, we first found that out, and we did, like I said, we did core samples over there, and that's what prompted the vendor to do further research on the library.
Do you want to explain the aggregate amount?
Oh, yes. There's an aggregate amount for the, an additional $242,000, and that is for the carpet that we are going to be doing over at the community center and here at Town Hall. But that won't happen unless we get funds in the facilities replacement fund. And when that happens, and we'll be able to keep this contract open and still be able to get that scale of.
So your action tonight, what you're being asked for is to not only approve this carpeting replacement over the library, but also not exceed an aggregate amount of 370,000. We're getting a substantial discount. Don't know if we're going to have the money to do it through other facilities, but we're wanting to at least lock in that discount. And then council will have the opportunity to review this and possible consideration if we do find the funding when we go through our annual budget process.
Thank you. That's Mike.
So Raymond, is that the original carpeting that's over there at the library?
Mayor, councilman, no, that, they've replaced this once before. I believe it was done in 2009 or 2010. 2011, we replaced the carpet at the museum.
So, and then as far as the schedule, are they, I know you said they're looking for, you know, temporary, smaller operation. Are they, you think summer, or is it going to be as quickly as possible in terms of trying to get it all?
They would like to, I would say, the Maricopa County Library System, they would like to do it in April, probably. That would be their best month.
And I think it's just helpful to remind everybody, I mean, we own that building, and we're responsible for some of these major items, and that the library district, you know, staffs and supplies the library, so just to make that distinction.
Thank you.
And that's a very good point that you brought up. You know, this is one of those situations where we're getting such a killer deal on just the annual maintenance is really not that much, and even when we periodically have to do carpet replacement, when you consider the staffing benefits of what that building would be to staff up our own library, we're getting really, a really good deal. And it's been one of those really great partnerships between us and Maricopa County Library District.
Councilman?
I think Dennis.
Councilman?
Have we considered a different type of flooring that wouldn't glue down? If we're using a water-based glue and we've got a moisture problem, would we not want to look at a different product possibly?
Mayor, councilmember, I believe that they have, they're going to use the best product out there to remedy the problem.
If I may, so, I mean, there are different options. We can certainly look at rolled carpet as an option. The vapor barrier is the big problem that needs to be installed. We believe that that's going to provide longevity to the carpeting that we're putting in. But our own experience in this building and throughout the campus is that when you have a problem, you might have a stain or some severe damage to a carpet tile, it's very easy to pop out a carpet tile and replace it, and it's much lower cost to do that than looking at maybe replacing a section, it looks like you just replaced a section of carpeting. So we have to kind of weigh both of those when we're considering these kind of options.
Did I miss something? Are you putting a vapor barrier on top of the concrete?
Yes, it is, it's an application. I believe it's a polymer-based application, and then they'll do a leveling compound over the top of that, and then apply the carpet tiles over that.
Thank you.
Councilman?
The, I'm not clear, well, first of all, about 125,000 for the library alone, is that right?
Correct.
Is that based on a competitive bid? Have we gone out to bid? Are we going out to bid? How is that being handled?
Mayor, councilmember, this is a cooperative purchasing agreement, so this has been vetted by state agencies. That's what we're co-op-ing off of.
Okay. And, Grady, I'm not clear what the motion is.
Basically, it would be to approve contract 2020-11 with Continental Flooring Company for the purchase and installation of flooring in the amount not to exceed 127,789.80 with the total aggregate amount of 370,000. So that's locking in the ability, if we do find money later on, you've already approved the contract and we don't have to come back. And we, if we don't do that, we could actually lose the, I guess, cost per square foot or whatever that we have pricing for.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, that just, it seems like a lot of money. It seems like a lot of money. Is there a way that this could be, I know the state, but is there a way that this could be put out for some competitive bid or something? Is that just, first off, it's only nine years old. The carpeting's only nine years old that we're replacing. And, I mean, it just seems like in nine years to outlay that kind of money for...
Just to answer your question, so the state, they actually get several of these contracts. They do a very competitive process. And so we're actually dovetailing onto something of, we did it on our own, we probably would not be able to get as desirable a pricing, because they're able to aggregate all the state, plus universities and cities and towns and all that. To your point, I do believe that we're going to get more years out of this than what we've currently experienced, because part of the issue is the water is causing wear and tear to the current carpeting that we have in there. We also tend to buy more pieces, so when we do have a damaged piece or something needs to be replaced, we're not having to replace all of it at once. It is a lot of money, I totally agree. Raymond, do you remember what the vapor barrier portion of this is alone? Was it 40,000?
I believe it's, it's probably about 10,000.
10,000 of it was for vapor?
Yes.
Okay. So I, we hear you, this has been actually kind of vetted quite a bit before we actually have brought this to council, because it is a lot of money.
Along with Councilman Brown's alternate flooring, is there a chance that maybe some tile or something would be, or some kind of a different flooring option other than carpeting that would be more durable than the carpeting? I'm sorry, I just can't wrap my mind around that number. That just seems like, you know...
Mayor, councilmembers, when we did the tile, the VCT, over at the community center, they came back with the best product for that application. For the library, they need that carpeting for sound and for comfort. I mean, you can't have in that big hall just a ceramic tile, or it's just the noise itself would be overpowering for that area. So carpeting is the best application for that, and we've been through that with the vendor, talking about what our options are, and this is what they've come up with.
Councilman?
I'm not speaking specifically to carpeting, but the public has to understand that we have an incredibly long list of infrastructure things that aren't being done. This is infrastructure. This is not even the tip of the iceberg in terms of our needs for this town. Things are deteriorating, and I don't know how we're possibly going to pay for them until things fail, but that's the reality of the situation.
And if I may, for point of clarification, councilmember Charnell pointed to me that it is actually 40,000 for the moisture barrier remediation. So it'd be, it's the most expensive single item. Carpet tile itself is about 37,000. So if you took that out of the equation, we didn't have to deal with that, and I believe that's a permanent thing, so once we put that in, future replacements will not be at this level that we're looking at. And I also feel very confident we'll have a longer life out of it. And then we're also, there is some painting planned for the inside, and I believe the Friends of the Library is going to help us with some of that. Do you want to just kind of share what is planned?
Correct. At that same timeframe, we would like to do the interior painting of the library. That is about $25,000, and it will be done in conjunction with the carpeting. So we'll get all the carpeting taken out so they can get in there and do the interior painting. Maricopa County is working with the Friends of the Library to see if they'll subsidize some of the cost of either the painting or the carpeting. They want to know what the amount is going to be for the full amount for the painting and for the carpeting.
Doing it at the same time. Councilman?
Yeah, I don't like spending this kind of money either. Apparently getting a very good deal, and I will vote for it. However, in the future, anything that comes up, especially infrastructure, I'm going to be asking the question, what are we not doing that we might spend the money on? What are our priorities? Because right now, I don't know what our priorities are. I know we have a long list of needs, but it seems to me it's the drip-drip method. First, it's a new piece of equipment, it's a new truck, it's a new this, it's a new that. But I think the question has to be asked is, where does that truck come in as related to all the other needs that we have as a town? And so anything comes before us, I'm going to be asking that question.
That's fair. And we do spend quite a bit of time each year on our capital facilities replacement fund, so you can see the priorities, and you have an opportunity to adjust those priorities as well.
Mayor?
Councilman?
I don't mean to be a pain, but I'm assuming that the carpet company, the quote for the carpet is separate than the quote for the water remediation?
Right. Mayor, councilmember, they're the same company, they're the ones that do it, and they do it all over the valley. They do it for the schools. So they're, I don't know if they have a subcontractor, I know it's part of the bid.
Do we have any speaker cards? No? Okay. Any further discussion? Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
Evidently.
I'll second.
Thank you. All is in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Six to one.
Motion passes six to one.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Thank you, Raymond. Next, we have the consideration of a request for a special use permit to allow new and unused automobiles on a property on Suaro Boulevard. Grady?
Yes. Mr. Wesley, our Development Services will give you a brief report on this topic.
Mayor and council, this is a request for property 11625 North Suaro Boulevard. It's a little over an acre-sized property, Zone C2. It's had a variety of uses over the years. At one point, it was a service station. You can still see the gas pumps out there. There've been some other auto-related uses in this building and adjacent buildings. Currently, Fountain Hills Off-Road is operating out of this property. They've been there for nine months or so. Their current business is to sell and install aftermarket products for Jeeps. They're wanting to expand that business to include actually selling Jeeps on the property. For the C2 zoning district, that requires approval of a special use permit, so that's why we're here this evening for that consideration. The property, this shows the area that will be used for the auto sales. They will be putting the vehicles for sale under the canopy that was there for the service station, and so that's the real extent of the use permit, is for that area to allow those Jeeps to be displayed and sold. They are also then making a few other minor adjustments to the property. The one is on the east side of the property, where there's some paving and some gravel. They're going to be kind of finishing off that paving, cleaning it up, and striping it for the customer parking. Another issue has been they're not wanting to use the driveway on the west side along the Suaro Frontage Road. Their plan shows putting a chain across there to block use of that particular access point, so all access will come in off of Desert Vista into the property. So they also plan to make some improvements to the building and the property itself, replacing some of the landscaping, making some repairs to the building. A letter attached to the application outlines some of those things they plan to do to improve the property. This has been to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review. They, along with staff, do recommend approval of the special use permit. The recommendation for approval includes a consideration of something besides a chain or in addition to the chain to block that driveway access. Suaro Boulevard being a major access into the town, we think we can come up with something a little bit more aesthetically pleasing than just a chain. The applicant's willing to work with staff to determine exactly what that would be that's within their means. Again, enhancing the landscaping, paving and striping the parking area, completing the repairs to the building, and repainting the building. The SUP is conditioned on getting those things done within six months following action by the council. And that is the end of the presentation. That is a summary of their request. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, John. Councilman Spellic.
I've received some emails concerning the tanks that are in the ground. What's going on with that? Tell me about it. What should we be concerned about?
Mayor, council, the former service station that was there, the tanks from that facility are still in the ground. DEQ has been trying to work with the property owner for a number of years to get those tanks removed. We don't know if there are any issues beyond the need to remove the tank. That'll be determined when they're dug up, to see if there were any leaks. There is concern that there could have been leaks. That is a DEQ issue. We know they are still actively working that and ready to move on to additional means that they have in place with the property owner. Staff has looked at the situation in this particular request. We have felt it was, well, first of all, in terms of the special use permit, there's no specific tie between what they're asking for to park Jeeps under the canopy and the tanks being there. And there's no specific thing that we felt like we could hang our hat on to require anything to be done about those tanks as part of the special use permit. It felt as important and beneficial to the town to get an active use of the property.
Has the staff contacted or been in contact with DEQ about it?
Yes, we have.
And what did they say?
They said that they are actively working, again, through their channels, to try to get the property owner to come into compliance. They understood our need to follow our procedures and didn't seem to have any concerns about us approving the special use permit.
Can we hear from the owner?
I don't know if the owner is here. The applicant is here.
Yeah.
Do you want to ask questions of the applicant?
I'd just like to hear what's... Sure. So what communications have you had, and what's your, what's your plan with the tanks and the communication that you guys are having?
The tanks have to do with the owner. I just leased the property. Right now, I'm doing accessories. I have vehicles parked out there from time to time as they're being put in the back and taken care of and arranged, et cetera, but I'd like to sell some vehicles and add something to the tax base in the town and do some business. As far as the owner goes, I, like I said, I don't know what his intentions are. I don't have access to the correspondence that he gets. I just know I have leased the property.
Thank you. Councilman?
Any other can I have?
I'm not sure, yeah.
No, I have any questions.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any questions.
I have one.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mike.
Were you, were you to get this approval under the canopy, then, were you going to light the Jeeps at night, or just, you know, like you're going to have lights on?
Just, I... Just, I, we have to work that out once again with the owner. Right now, we don't light up the area at night. We would improve it for visibility, but I'm, right now, we probably would look at changing to something more energy-efficient and something more pleasing than some of the stuff in the past. I'm not sure what you're asking me.
Well, I mean, I'm pretty sure what's there is pretty old in terms of what the lights that are on that canopy. So I'm sure to meet our dark sky ornaments, you'd have, you know, the owner, you would have to change those out and put something different in there. So I'm just curious, because that just kind of adds to the whole neighborhood impact if you are going to light that facility at night. You know, that's why I ask.
All our intentions is to improve the appearance of the property. I know it's been vacant for a long time, and we tried to come in and do a few things and stop putting any more money in until we get some approval to do some business there, selling some Jeeps and selling some vehicles.
Thank you. Just wanted to see if anybody had a question. Do you have a question or a comment?
Comment.
Go ahead.
You have a question?
I'd like to see you be able to go into business there. But I've had some experience with this, as has my wife Cynthia, who is a consultant. EPA has what's called a LUST program for leaking underground storage tanks. It's a problem all over the country. They haven't begun to be able to ameliorate it. And asking for the age of the tanks is irrelevant, because they can still be fine today and be leaking, rusting out tomorrow. For that reason, until we can reconcile this issue and have them removed, I just cannot vote to approve this.
One of the things I want to mention, now that you mentioned that, is the, usually for the state has a program to help mitigate underground storage tanks, but it's when they're abandoned and you don't know who the owner is. But in this case, they do. And I don't think there's been a lot of success in getting this particular, we don't know that it's leaking, you know, it might not be, but just to even get to that point, there hasn't been any successful communication between DEQ and the owner. And you're kind of in the middle here.
Yep. And I don't intend to do anything that I couldn't do now with what I do already. I'm just putting vehicles on the property.
I'll let the councilmen, and then we have speaker cards, and then maybe we can talk a little bit more about this. Councilman?
Mayor, thank you. I'm listening to this discussion, and I'm sitting, thinking to myself, for the twenty years that I've been in this community, I've never heard the town council be concerned about an underground tank at that property. And now that we have an applicant that's here trying to do business in our community, trying to add to the tax base, we suddenly have a problem, or we're indicating in some way, shape, or form that there's, there may be a problem. It is the owner's responsibility to make sure that he is, he is responsible for those tanks. If there's potential leaks or things of that nature, our town staff's indicated they've communicated with the owner, and I think it's the owner's responsibility. It's not our jurisdiction as a town council to determine whether or not he can have a special use permit based on the tanks being in the ground. I think that I'm in favor of this. I'm in favor of your special use permit. I'd like to see you be very successful there, be a good neighbor, and the owner of the property will therefore have some revenues from this property that are more, maybe more than they are now, and it'll be more desirable. And maybe at that point, maybe the owner will have an opportunity to do something about these tanks if it's an issue. But until we know that there's an environmental hazard there, I don't think the town council is going to have to worry about that. The state of Arizona will come in and shut them down pretty quick if there is an environmental hazard in that area. I don't think the town council is going to be the one that's going to do that.
I understand what you're saying, but I would say that if that happened, I feel a responsibility towards starting a business that might have to stop in a few months.
It's...
If, excuse me.
Sure.
Once DEQ is able to take the action that they've been trying to do but haven't been able to be successful, we don't know what that's going to look like. And it could be after you've done some improvements, and then they come in and dig up the tanks and say cease and desist for a while. So I feel a responsibility on that level, even if it's not a technically or jurisdiction to, you know, to see, to mitigate an underground storage tank.
Mayor, is there some sort of statutes that are a requirement to remove those tanks? Or are we speculating that maybe inspections weren't done on those tanks, and now that is an issue that we're presenting to this applicant, that the owner hasn't done his due diligence to determine if there's a leak? Is there some sort of statute that we're, we are citing here that's a cause for concern for this council?
They're state law, and it doesn't mean that they have to remove, councilman, doesn't mean they have to remove it, but they're supposed to figure out if anything's going on there. But, you know, obviously, go ahead.
I've got a question.
Okay.
For the applicant. Are you aware that if they have to come in and take those tanks out, that you might have to relocate for a while?
That would be, yeah. I mean, I can't deny that that would be there, yeah.
You know that there's a risk?
Right.
Okay. He knows there's a risk. We don't know if they're leaking. The man wants to start a business, and I don't, I don't see the problem.
Thank you. Councilman?
You know, sometimes revenue is trumped by public health, safety, and welfare. And leaking underground storage tanks don't necessarily leach and leak and leak right around the tank. It can spread. It can go long distances. It can be carried by other things like water. You don't wait, I don't think you wait until you have a situation where hazmat crews have to come in and dig them up and clean them up to make sure everything's safe. I think it's a mistake.
I understand your position, councilman, but if I'm not allowed to or could not do this business on this property, I'm probably going to have to shut down. So...
And I don't seek that. I don't want that.
I'm just saying it's, I'm not the owner. I want to do business on the property. That's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you. Councilman?
Yes, thank you. Mayor and Councilman Magazine, for as long as you've been on this council, and this has not come up as a council issue, if there's other areas of this town that have potential environment or hazards, I think that you should look into those as well. And we should have a, maybe an ordinance in town that they have to be required to provide us evidence that there's no leakage. And you know that's obnoxious of a request. And it's just as obnoxious, in my opinion, to speculate that there's some sort of a potential issue with this property, and that this gentleman's not going to be able to open a business on this property because of that. I think that we allow this to move forward, and if this owner ultimately is in violation of some statute that hasn't been cited here this evening, that hasn't been discussed in regards to a state law that requires this owner to do anything with those tanks, then I say we pass this because I think we're speculating that there's an issue, and we're making, we're making an issue that's not even there.
Excuse me. Councilman Charnell?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first I'll start off with a comment. I mean, we, the town, Fountain Hills, I don't know if we were incorporated here or not. We have had this situation with tanks up on the north side of town where Fountain Hills Bike Shop is located. It used to be a convenience store and, and gas tanks there, and they, they were leaking, and they had the, the gas spread underground and through the aquifer. And so they had to dig these wells and had these pumps to clean out the groundwater and, and the soil in that area. It was leached all the way across El Pueblo Boulevard. So that situation can happen, and I agree that we don't, we shouldn't assume that that's the case here. I guess I just have a question for John, and you might not necessarily know this. You've had some contact with DEQ, but I mean, is this process normal in terms of, you know, they send a letter, they call, and they don't get any response? I mean, they don't have any more oomph behind them to, you know, go dig a sample and find out what's going on? Or is this kind of normal, how this is progressing?
Mayor, councilmember, I don't have a lot of history with exactly how these processes work, how usual or unusual this particular situation is. I get the sense this is a little bit unusual, how hard it's been for them to get a hold of this particular property owner. But they do have means in place, and they're ready to take that next step, and working with the AG's office to do what they need to do to, to try to bring the property owner into compliance. The first step would be to remove the tank so that they can see if there has been any, any issues or not, and then go from there.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. John, can you, can you share with us who you spoke to and what communication that, that you have had from the state? And it seems like what you're suggesting is that they're in some sort of noncompliance with communication. Are they required to have communication? Are they required to do something? Because this is the way I see this playing out. I say, I say we see a business start to be successful in this town, yet on that location, and that gentleman says to the owner of the property, I want to buy your property, and we're going to do a phase-one environmental study because it's going to be required by my, my financier to do this. And at that point, you're going to know whether or not this is going to be an issue for him to purchase that property and continue to expand in Fountain Hills or not. So I'm just curious. You mean, is there a state statute? Is there some sort of law that they're supposed to remove those tanks, and they're in noncompliance of that now? Is that what you're telling us?
Yes.
And you get this in writing? Somebody's told you this in writing?
Yes. I have spoken to the inspector responsible for this property and that person's supervisor, and it is a requirement for these tanks to be removed. And they've been working with the property, or trying to work with the property owner for a number of years to bring them into compliance with those state requirements.
Councilman?
Yeah, to Councilman Tallis, who indicated that I've never raised an objection to this in the past. I've been on this council for five years. This is the first time I've ever heard a case where there are underground storage tanks, ever. And the idea that I'm supposed to go around town checking them out, I don't think my four hundred dollars a month quite covers that.
Duly noted. However, it's a property that's been, you know, it's been a mess for a long time. And now we have somebody who wants to clean it up, and I'd rather see it cleaned up.
Any other comments? One of the things that we talked about, that I asked Aaron about, was doing a conditional special use permit. I think everybody, well, I think everybody's okay with the idea of, you know, the thing that we're actually doing the special use permit about, which is selling the Jeeps on the property, feeling like that's a compatible business to have there. And you know what? I just realized, did I ask for speaker cards?
No, I do have one speaker card. Well, it's actually a written comment card.
Okay. Does, does anybody want to speak? Did you want to speak? I saw you before. Yeah. Is that your card?
Because I got involved in this nine months ago.
Wait, wait, sir. Come up and, was that your speaker card too, sir? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I got involved in this prior to them, nine months ago. I sat in front of, prior town manager told me absolutely no way in the world is this going to happen. I went and met with the owner, who I was partially involved with, to figure out what we can do to get the tanks out. But my personal interests were dissolved by the city, telling me I could not get a special use permit for that property. So I'm a little pissed that it passed the first stage. The second stage is, I know a whole lot about this property, probably more so if not than most people, and I know they do. There is, yes, I do. Trust me. Okay? There is means to get the property cleaned up. It's going to take months. I've done research after research trying to get a hold of the owner before he decided to rent it out to somebody else. Okay? So your question, is there environmental problems? You know what? I can't say a hundred percent, but I think you ought to talk and delay the situation until you talk with the AG department, who's getting involved in the whole ordeal as well. I mean, I'm only telling you what I was told by the state when I talked to them, to try to find out if there was an issue with the state allowing the city to do the ordinance. They told me that was absolutely impossible. We would not allow the permit to go through unless those storage tanks were removed. So one, I was lied to by the town manager prior to this gentleman.
Yeah, let me just clarify. It was the Development Services Director previously that you dealt with, not me.
Yeah. So I'm a little pissed. The whole situation's gone through this way. I lost out on opportunity. I think the property eventually should be allowed the special use permit. It's stupid for it not to. However, I can guarantee you, and they have no idea, okay, that there is going to be an issue. It's going to take months to resolve. I think before you make it, you ought to call the state and get your answers that you're asking right now.
Thank you. Any further comment? Excuse me. Did you want to fill out a card, please?
Do I have to fill out a card?
Yeah, that'd be great. You can talk first and then fill it.
Can I have my lease on the property?
I'm sorry?
I have a lease on the property.
Okay. You can speak and then fill out the card, though, so that we have the record.
I've rented the property for twelve years. Have had a lease. I actually have a five-year lease right now with a five-year option on the property. I personally know the owner. I knew the owner's father. I know the owner's brother. And John thought he had something going. I don't know. He said his name was Steve. His name is actually Charlie Ryan is the owner's name. And if anybody has a chance to do anything with the owner, it's me. It's not him. So I will work on this to see what we can do about the tanks. But one has really nothing to do with the other. I mean, we're just trying to do business there. And I understand there's issues with the tanks and stuff, and I've heard about this for years. I used to own Hollywood's Body and Paint right next door, the adjacent property. And they used to come down and talk to me, and I would relay the messages to Charlie. So if anybody's got a chance to deal with Charlie, he's a little eccentric. He's got health issues. It's me. Nobody else. I mean, maybe somebody else. The state maybe can be able to come in and seize the property or whatever. But I have a better chance than anybody.
Thank you, sir. Councilman?
So just to clarify, if we deny this, the same situation continues with the property, right? Whether we approve or deny this, the same status goes forward. Either it's going to be cleaned up or it's not, correct? So we either approve it, and he can run his business on it, and the underlying issue continues, or we don't approve it, he doesn't run a business, and the underlying issue continues. Is that correct?
Well, in my, I guess what I was hoping would be that if we granted it on the condition of them resolving the issue with the state, then we're not saying no to the business, but we're saying that that's a condition, just like the other conditions here, is to somehow resolve this. Because if DEQ's on the verge, or already has gone to the AG's office, then there's something going on there. And like I said earlier, I feel, I understand that you know that there's a risk, but I also have a level of feeling of responsibility, not only about the financial risk or the fact that you may have to suspend whatever it is you start, but also it could be a health issue, and we don't know that. So I'd rather say we grant it, but in, you know, six months or something, it goes away if it hasn't been resolved or whatever. And that risk is the same as it is if we all said yes carte blanche. There's still a risk of it being stopped by the state and/or by the AG's office.
Mayor?
Councilman?
Thank you. I agree with Councilwoman Crone and your assessment of the situation. That's the way I see it, too. It's either we allow the business to move forward, and the AG's office, if that's the case, is going to handle this, and it's going to take its path down through the court system. And he's either going to be forced to do what he needs to do, or he's going to win a case that he's not forced to do what they're requiring him to do. We are not the jury in that regard. I would like to ask, ask the gentleman that's leasing the property now, because he probably has a lot of history of this property. You know, these, these tanks, that has not been an operating gas station for thirty years. Is that correct?
Actually, it was operated approximately thirteen years ago, probably. But the, the tanks have been certified prior, or after that, and they were sealed up and closed and drained.
Okay.
To my knowledge. I don't know exactly the specifics of that, but yeah, as far as I know, there's nothing in those tanks. Now, whether they leaked before or whatever, I can't testify to that, but...
So, so my point is this, when we talk about having a public health and safety issue, these tanks have been emptied, these tanks have been sealed, these tanks have not had any, any, anything in them in a decade or more, and... or more. And if there was anything in those tanks, it leaked 10, 15 years ago, potentially, and it's in the soil. But it's not as if it's an open tank, like Mike is indicating with this other area that leaked down through the aquifers and things. So I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill in regards to this issue at this council level. I think we should move forward, allow, to grant this special use permit, and allow the litigation or potential litigation to take its course with the owner and the state of Arizona. And whatever requirements they would have, that will come down the line. We won't have to push that envelope. That's something that you understand.
Absolutely. And I have no problem working with the state to get the owner of the property involved, if that's what it takes, you know, down the road. But for right now, we just want to, we want to run a business, and that's all we're trying to do.
Counselman Charnow?
Thank you, Mayor. I have another question for John. And I, too, don't want to see just a chain across the driveway there. And I know it was kind of agreed upon, you're going to work with them. So how does that, how does that, what does that look like in terms of, you know, we give them the special use permit and they have six months? I mean, if they don't comply, what happens then in terms of, we don't make them do that stuff first, right? And then give them the permit? We give them the permit, and then they have six months?
Mayor, Councilmember, in terms of this permit, yes. I mean, you're going to vote, I assume, tonight, one way or the other on that. And so the permit would be issued. The special use permit would be in place. But before they could begin operation, one of the first things they are going to need to do is put the barrier across that driveway. And so we'll work with them on that. Again, my idea that we're talking about is use some combination of some potted plants that can kind of break up most of that driveway. They need to use some chain between that, too. We can maybe do that and kind of work out that right number.
Yeah, because I think, you know, if we grant this, I mean, it is a good opportunity to clean up the site. It's been an eyesore for a long, long time. And so I definitely want to see more than just a chain across that driveway.
And Councilmember, to kind of finish up with that answer, too, a little bit. So we are proposing six months that they would get the rest of the site improvements done. And if they don't get them done, we'd be back to council about revoking them the special use permit.
Mayor.
Counselman?
Maybe I wasn't listening carefully, which is entirely possible. But I heard that the tanks are empty and sealed. It's the first time I've heard that. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember, I don't know that for a fact. It's been speculated in discussions I've had, but nobody's really known that for sure.
So we can't just accept that. And if they are empty and sealed, why would DEQ want them removed? It doesn't make sense to me. And so I can't assume they're empty and sealed. And to say they're 30 years old and they haven't leaked, are you kidding me? There are tanks like this that have leaked after...
166.
Tanks like this have leaked after 50 years, 60 years, 70 years, or 10 years. So to say that they're 30 years old and they haven't leaked, and I've heard the probability is that they won't leak, everything in life is a probability.
So let me ask you, the folks that are, you know, in favor of this, is there a problem with having, since there's a six, kind of a six-month stipulation? So how does it play out? They do the improvement on the property, they have certain improvements that are required here, including a condition that we get, that they resolve this with DEQ? That's unacceptable as far as the rest of the other things.
It's not our business.
It's not our, it's not the town council's business. You know, I'd like to, may I say something?
Of course.
I'd like this council to sit back and listen to itself, because we're trying so hard to bring businesses to town. We've got a business in town, and we're condemning them over something that's not even their problem.
But I'm not trying to condemn anybody. Of course not. It's just a matter of...
Well, what would you call it? You're saying, oh, my God, we might have a tank that's leaking. It's not their problem.
We have conditions on this, on this special use permit. We do that kind of thing all the time. So the idea is that, no, we don't go looking around, but we now have the knowledge that there is something here that's on the verge of having legal action against it. And I think we have a responsibility, since we know about that, not only...
Mayor.
Excuse me.
Yes.
So since we do put conditions on, and the fact that they have to come for a special use permit means they're doing something that's out of the ordinary, that's not in the usual use of that property, so it's entirely proper for us to be making, having discussions and trying to figure out what we think is the best thing for this property. I mean, there could be somebody up here who doesn't think that we should even be able to be selling Jeeps on that property. I'm not one of those, but that's why it's in front of us. If it wasn't something for us to make a decision about, it wouldn't be in front of us. So while we're making these decisions and we're talking about the chains and these other improvements that we're asking them to do, I would, I wouldn't think it was outlandish to also expect them to clear up the fact that DEQ's been trying to reach them, and now it's reached a level. When you said, is there a statute? Yes, there is. And that's...
But what is it? I mean, I asked what it was.
Well, because there's a...
Attorney, tell me what a statute is.
Well, I could tell you what a statute is. I don't know what this, what statute would govern here. I do not know, Counselman.
So, Mayor, are you completely done? Can I?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I believe that this is going to take its course through the proper channels. Plenty of issues get referred to the Attorney General's office, and no action is taken. So we don't know what's going to happen. We don't, we're speculating that something's going to happen here. And let this gentleman run his business, and let the owner of the property deal with the repercussions of a potential issue, if that's the case. It's not our, it's not our job. And I don't think, if it was a public safety, health issue, et cetera, like you've indicated, I don't think it is.
How do we know, though?
I don't, I just don't believe it is. I believe this property's been sitting here a long time. There's a business already operating on it. There's businesses surrounding the whole area that are operating in it. Most of them are in that automotive type of business. So I don't think that having this gentleman run his business now, selling Jeeps legally in town and being taxed on them, because I know he's sold a few Jeeps on that property already, because I've seen them out there. So now we're going to do it legally, and we're going to do it as a business. And it's not going to adversely affect any aspect of any litigation with the state of Arizona and any requirement from this owner taking those tanks out. It's not going to, it's not going to have any issue with it. So we're creating an issue that's not truly there. And for that matter, you hit the nail on the head. We're not talking about, if someone has an issue with selling Jeeps on that, on that particular piece of property, then let's be honest about what the real issue is. You don't want a car dealership there. And if that's the case, just say it.
Excuse me. That's not it at all.
Well, this is a very similar, this is a very similar conversation, that we had Rex Foley up here that wanted to have an automotive dealership on the lot across the street, and we had 101 reasons why it wasn't going to work on that lot. Six months later, we come back, and we change the ordinance, and we remove all the restrictions on that property. And ultimately, now you can have what Rex was here doing. And we killed that opportunity for business, too. So here we are, doing the same thing.
Well, that is something before I was here, but we did change some zoning there fairly recently. So I think each thing is, each item that we see is case by case. And this is a very unusual case. So we're trying to do the best we can. Nobody wants no business there. I don't want there to be danger for somebody that's going there every day. You say, I'm speculating. I'm not saying there is, but there's a possibility of it. And you speculating that there isn't, it's just, you know, it's just a difference of opinion right now of our role in how this property is used. Yes, sir?
I frankly resent being told that I'm being duplicitous, that my real agenda here is to not have a dealership there. That is not the issue for me. Having said that, if I may, I'm going to make a motion.
Oh, Counselman.
Vice Mayor.
Well, before you do, before you do, Councilman Magazine, I just wanted to say to you, Mayor, I understand what your concern is. I understand what you're trying to do. I think my concern is, though, the applicant, you're suggesting that we put a condition on this that the applicant has no control over. And I just don't think that's fair. I mean, whatever's going on underlying with the owner is going to happen, whatever we do. Doesn't matter what we do today. So if you put that condition on there, it's not, the applicant can't do a thing about it.
I agree with you on that, that it is up to the owner. But I was feeling like there might be some motivation to the owner if this was, if we gave a special use permit on the condition that the owner settle what's going on with the state. And especially since you have a relationship with them, so...
Well, if I need to stand up, I have no guarantees.
No, of course not.
I can work with the owner and see what I can do. But just like I've heard here tonight, one has really nothing to do with the other. I'm not the owner, and so I can't control what he does or what the state does. All I can do is say I can try and see what I can do. I love the town, so...
Thank you. Any other comments you said? I'm sorry? Oh, I thought I heard something. You want to make a motion?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Excuse me. I'm going to move approval of the special use permit, subject to approval by DEQ regarding the underground storage tanks.
I think we know where that goes. I'll second that. And the other conditions, too.
Yeah, and the other conditions, yeah.
Yeah. And I don't think there's going to be any, any support for that.
Can I just say one thing?
Not a motion.
All those, so...
It should be approved.
We could just say, say all those a favor, and then they'll make another motion? Is that...
Yeah. If we could just vote on that and then...
Yeah, okay. So all those in favor of approving the special use permit with the conditions as stated, including resolving the issues with DEQ, say aye. Aye. Thank you. Anybody in opposed?
Opposed to the motion? Yes.
Roll call. Roll call.
Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Tollis?
I am in opposition of the motion.
Councilmember Spallic?
Aye.
Mayor Dickey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaCron?
Nay.
Councilmember Brown?
Nay.
Councilmember Charnow?
Nay.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Motion fails three to four.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I move to approve special use permit 1902, subject to the compliance with property improvements defined in this report.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
Motion passes four to three.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. So next, our item is, make sure I don't skip anything. No, sir, I'm sorry. We're...
You do it. You do it, it's fine.
Our next item is, sir, I'm sorry. We can talk later.
Oh, I want to tell you something.
Madame Mayor, it would be appropriate to remove this gentleman from...
Sir, please.
If you so wish.
It's just that he needs to make sure that there's a problem with the land, they could get it, but he won't do.
Thank you.
Because that's what they wanted to do.
Our item is a consideration. Our next item is calling the special election. Grady? Is this you, Grady?
This is the call for the special election as it relates to the referendum. You recall, at the last council meeting, council at that time opted to designate May 19th, 2020, to be the special election date for the question on daybreak. Did you want... That's the report at this point. The resolution before you would be calling for that special election and would officially make that the date, and then this would be communicated with county elections. And so the clerk, do you have any other...
I would just...
I think the clerk was supposed to do the report on this, wasn't he? I do apologize.
I kept waiting for...
She's always, she's always ready for this, and then I do that. I do apologize, Liz.
I did want to mention, on the resolution, we included a sample notice of what will go out in the newspaper. And within there is the request for arguments, pro and con statements. And I just wanted to confirm, in the past, we have charged $100 for those. That is part of this resolution. If that were to change, then we would need to change that. But that is the adopted fee at this time that the townhouse been charging.
So it will be $100 to do your statements?
Yes, unless it were to change.
That's the way it always is. I do have a question. It's kind of silly, but the way, the way it's written up there, request to town, council, consideration of adopting the resolution, da-da-da, is a yes? What's a yes and what's a no?
A yes. I had drafted some language, and Aaron is in the process of looking that over, but state laws...
I did look at it.
Okay. State law is pretty clear on the fact that a yes vote, because you're referring the actual legislation to the public, a yes vote would confirm the change, would approve the zone change.
Okay. So those...
A no vote would keep it what it is now. And that's what will be on the ballot. Part of it will say, a yes vote will have the effect of, a no vote will have the effect of. So it should be clear to the public what their vote is going to...
Lots of luck.
So by saying yes, you're saying the action that we took is...
You're saying no to daybreak.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh.
No, but saying no.
It's the opposite.
If...
Mayor.
Go ahead.
What did I say?
You just said the opposite, I think, of what it is.
Sorry.
Counselman?
Mayor, are we going to have any speakers this evening on this topic right now?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay. Because I have had, in the last two weeks, some new information from our previous meeting that I thought was very interesting that I'd share with the council. And I don't know if you all received any type of communication from the developer himself, but he's here, Jeremy Hall. And what was shared with me was some new information that I think would have added to the last council's conversation as to when this should go to the voters. I'd like to hear from Jeremy Hall, if the mayor would call him and have him speak to this issue. He was not at the last meeting, and one of the reasons may have been that we had some changing in staff, and we had some significant changes in our, in our building department. And the communication was never provided that this was going to be something that was going to be discussed and decided on at the last meeting, or at least voted to move forward to the next meeting. So at your discretion, I think it'd be appropriate to ask the developer to address us and to address his concerns about this issue.
This is an agenda item, and you're welcome to fill out a card and come up and speak for sure. I'm sorry?
Can't speak and then fill it out.
I can't understand...
Can he speak and then fill it out?
Yeah, sure. Come up and then, yeah, because this is a regular agenda item. You can certainly come speak to it. Hi.
Thank you, Mayor, and council. I wasn't aware I needed to fill out a card if I was the applicant, but at any rate, I'm happy to fill one out. First of all, yeah, I was not informed of the last meeting, or I would have been here. I understand it was put on the agenda just the one day before, and, and we didn't know. But anyway, thanks for having me. The, and I also appreciate the fact that we want to try and move this saga along as quickly as we can. I would prefer that we have the, the issue voted on at the, at the first regular election, which I understand would be August, that would be a primary election in August. I have been working with the landowner, and we've secured an extension on this project to get us through that, as well as the site plan approval that will subsequently come before the council after this. So, we have the time, so there's no, it's not necessary to accelerate it. I've heard estimates as low as $35,000, as high as $50,000 as an expense to the taxpayers of this town to have a special election. It's unnecessary. We don't need it. I would rather do it on the regular election, when we've got, you know, more, more of the public coming out and have a, you know, a, a bigger turnout in, in the, in the election.
Okay, thank you. Aaron, the agenda item ahead of us today is the Resolution 2019-59, which was that the town council voted unanimously six to nothing to bring this back, to call, bring back a resolution calling for a special election on May 19th. This was already voted on. Is that correct?
Well, you, Mayor, council, I believe the motion was, a motion to direct staff to bring the resolution so that you can call the election, which is what council will be voting to do tonight. So, actually calling the election is this evening.
But the six to nothing vote was to have the election on May 19th?
To direct a resolution to be brought forward so that you could call an election for May of 2019.
Right, but the discussion that night was about when we were going to do it, and now is to actually call it, because we had to do it because we had some time issues that tell us when and where we can do, or when we can do certain things.
Mayor, and council, I believe that to be correct, at least in part, that the discussion was whether to hold it in May or August, and it was the, well, yes, correct. That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I think based on this new information from the developer and the fact that he has an extension that is, is passed the, the August primary, I think if that information was shared at our last meeting, that it would have had an impact on, I know it would have had an impact on me, because I thought this was something that we had to move forward very quickly because of the fact that he was under contract, and we had to make it, had, had to have a decision one way or the other. With this new information, I think that waiting an additional, from May to August, is, is not going to adversely affect our community. I don't think it's going to have any effect on whether or not we get a good turnout and we have a good representation of who, what the voters want in this community. And I think it would be wise to save the estimated, did you say, town manager?
It, it would be, it would be 35 to 50,000. It'd be less, because if we were to go to August, we're just doing the publicity pamphlet, is my understanding. So, we're not having to necessarily pay, we're just piggybacking on existing election in August.
So, it would be really of no subsequent cost to the town to add this to the ballot in August? Is that correct?
It just, it would be less money.
It's still cost.
When we say less, I, I wanted.
Talking $15,000 less.
$50,000.
$15,000 less.
So, it's fif, 35 to 50?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's, that's, 35 is going to be char, is a cost regardless. So, so 50 is extra, we're paying, so really, we'd be paying 50 plus 35 for the other election. Is that correct?
No.
I have a question, Aaron. What is the agenda item for tonight?
This agenda item that we're discussing, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Consideration of adopting Resolution 2019-59, ordering and calling a special election to be held in and for the town on May 19, 2020, to refer to the voters of the town, the two referendum items that are before you.
Thank you. So, is, you feel like it's in order that we're discussing the date again, when we already voted on this at the last election?
Mayor, council, I think if the discussion is whether to, whether to call an election for May 19, 2020, I, I mean, the council has to discuss whether it's going to call that election. So, I mean, I, I have to say that it's within the purview of the item, that we, if the council is going to vote yea or nay, and there's discussion as to that item, I, I'd have to say it's within the purview of the item.
Councilman, I guess my, my concern with that is that people that came last time thought that's when we were discussing when to have it, and I know what you said about, you know, getting new information, but the information that we got that night from a speaker and from other discussion is what led to that decision. So, I, I feel like there will be people that don't think we're here discussing whether or not to have it in August or, or May again, because we already decided that. Councilman?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry I wasn't here last week when that decision was made. I do have a question. Aside from the savings of $15,000, what are the positive or negative consequences of doing it in August instead of May? Can anybody answer that?
I'm going to have our clerk respond to that, but we did talk, it's at length about that, it was actually in the staff report. So, do you want to talk about the benefits of an all male ballot as opposed to?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that in front of me. I can go off of somewhat memory. One of the benefits was of having the mail election in May was to have, you know, just town issues on a ballot that would be mailed out to everyone.
Quicker turnaround on that.
A quicker turnaround on the results. It just, it gets everything answered two and a half months earlier. And then, and some of the disadvantages was with the August primary, you've got the issue of the partisanship, which is very confusing for the public, for anyone that's not registered, one of the two parties. And so, they have to make a special request to tell the county which ballot they want, or if they want just a town ballot. It becomes very confusing because of the partisanship.
And we also discussed the low voter turnout of independent voters in the August primary. Yes, sir?
I, I would just like staff to address Mr. Hall's assertion that the agenda was put out one day.
That's not correct.
Okay, so.
I mean, we, we post our agendas one week before the meeting, so I, I'm not sure where the one day came from.
Yeah, I, I believe Mr. Hall's comment may have come from, if, whether it was a miscommunication or misinterpretation, I'm not going to throw it out there, but I know the item was done, it was still posted a week early, it was posted with the rest of the agenda, a, a week before the meeting, but it was added shortly before, and that may have led to a lapse in communication or additional communication, but it was nonetheless posted to the public a week in advance, the same as all of our agendas are posted.
Councilman?
Just a clarification. So, May 5th would be an all male ballot?
May 19th.
May 19th.
Yeah, and August would be, would not be an all male ballot?
Correct. It would be at the polls.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We also just, we also discussed the fact that, and correct me if I'm wrong, counselor, that the savings, the $15,000 difference, could very easily be eaten up in legal fees for, what, what did we, what did we discuss?
Well, Mayor, council, I believe what Councilman Spellic is addressing is a conversation that we had afterwards, where, you know, the number of public records requests that we have responded to, that plays at least a, a part, I'm not sure how great or small a part, but you have expended significant fees on reviewing public records requests and the documents that are going out the door. So, part of the consideration of the May election, in my mind at least, was also reducing the amount of staff and attorney time expand, expended on the, related to the daybreak issue, i.e., if you have it in May, you get less staff time devoted to that as opposed to continuing it out to August. Like I said, I don't, not commenting on how great or small a consideration that should be, but it is a consideration.
Do we have any speaker cards? Anything further? Would anybody like to make a motion to call the election for May 19th?
I make a motion that, for consideration in having the election on May the 19th. Adopt a resolution, I'm sorry, to have the election on May the 19th.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2019-59, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes six to one.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, the next item is not technically a conflict as we know it, but I am going to recuse myself from the discussion, since I'll be running for reelection, so the vice mayor's going to chair this part of the agenda.
This isn't going to be retroactive?
No.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the next item on the agenda is whether, well, a consideration of amending the town code to extend the term of the office of the mayor from two years to four years. And I believe maybe there's a presentation by someone? Grady, or? Well, I can just add the ordinance. It, it's pretty basic, it just, the ordinance itself would be adopted if that was the desire of the council, and then one of the conditions within the ordinance states that it would not become effective until it goes to a vote of the public. Because a vote of the public was required when the council originally went from council-selected mayor to direct election of mayor. So, to make any changes to that, it's our opinion that we would need to take it back to the voters to amend the length of term. Are there any questions? Because I have one. So, do you, does anyone know when they made the decision to have that a two-year term instead of a four-year term? Were there reasons given why it would be different? No. I have pulled up the minutes and, thank you. I have pulled up the minutes to try to get more understanding of it, but the discussion, it always talked about a two-year term, so.
Just, just for clarification, too, so, when the voters were asked to, to address this when they went to the ballot, it was really not talking about a two-year term? It was really silent, but under state law?
The ordinance that was originally adopted to do the direct election of mayor also included within the ordinance that it would be a two-year term, but the question itself that went on the ballot was strictly whether or not to have direct election.
Right. And there's, there's, do you want to talk about the state law as it relates to, there's an assumption that unless it's otherwise stated, that these terms tend to be two years, under state law?
Sure, so, in Arizona revised statutes, it provides for four-year terms for council members and a two-year term for mayors by default. You are able to change that, but our opinion, and the opinion of the League of Arizona Cities and Towns as well, is that because direct, as, as town clerk, as our town clerk stated, because changing mayor from appointed or chosen by the council to direct select goes to the voters, by default, a change of that term also must go to the voters.
Councilman Magazine?
I believe I read, correct me on this, that a majority of jurisdictions in Arizona have four-year terms for mayor, is that correct?
I don't know the numbers offhand, but there are several that have four-year terms, and I think more are going to four-year terms.
Councilman, if I, if I may, I believe that out of the 90 or so municipalities in Arizona, my recollection is that half of those have, or slightly over half, have gone to four-year terms? 50 or 51?
Councilmember Tollis?
Thank you. You know, I did some research on this today, and a lot of these that are four-year terms also have salaries that come with the job, and they're much larger communities than ours. I, I feel, and I've, I've given a lot of thought to this, that a two-year term is a very appropriate timeframe for the town of Fountain Hills for the mayor. And the reason I say that is, is the following. I think when someone runs for mayor of this community, that they have to set an agenda, they have to set a tone, and they have to have a vision for this community, and they have existing council members that have likely, at least three of them have been already seated. So, it's important that mayor wins the consensus of the rest of the council, and the direction that they are going to go is, is, is accepted, and you have support. Four years for a mayor that may not be very effective, I think is going to drive our community, which we have a very, and we can have a very divisive community on issues. And we did have back 20, 18 years ago or so, a recall of a mayor, and I can see that happening again. I can see, I can see many things potentially happening. So, if you run for mayor for two years, and you do a great job, and you have the support, you're going to get reelected if you want to get reelected anyway. So, to extend that to four years, I don't think it's necessary. You already have council members at four years, and for the compensation that we all have on this council, this is a, a major sacrifice to your, to your families, to your businesses, to all aspects of, of, of your time commitments. So, I think two is, is appropriate, and it should stay that way. I was actually surprised to see this on the agenda tonight, it was the first I saw it, when I saw the agenda come out, that this was going to be discussed, so I'm in favor of keeping it at two. And we may have some really good people that are willing to put two years up, and if they do, then we might have more competition.
Thank you, Councilmember Spellic.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Two, two years is good, but I think the bottom line is, is that we're just looking for permission to put this on the ballot, correct? So, we would let actually the residents decide, not the council decide, if it should be a two or four-year term, correct?
Yeah, Mayor, council, it would be up to the electorate to approve or reject the ordinance that we're adopting.
Okay, and if, what, when are we, when would we think that, would that be on that, the May?
That would be.
Along with the?
That would be the intention, yes.
Okay. I would say that if it's going to be a four-year term, I would totally like to discuss term limits with how long you can stay in office. So, I'm a firm believer, you get an eight-year crack at this, you should be able to set the tone for what you want to do for the town and everything, and then make way for other people. So, I'm for putting the four-year and let the residents decide, and I'm also, would like to discuss the possibility of putting term limits also, and letting the voters decide if they think that, you know, having a two-year term as mayor and a two-year term as council is enough.
Any other comment? Oh. Yeah, I do have another comment. I want a clarification, too. Here we are talking about an ordinance, and, and putting this to the voters to change an ordinance on this particular issue. At our last council meeting, I had discussed the idea of the potential of the town bonding to purchase the property if it was voted down for the daybreak, and the answer was that we can't, we can't do that. We can't do that because it's not changing an ordinance? We can't do that for what particular reason? Why, why couldn't we ask even more questions of the voters if we have an opportunity to?
It's a good legal question that the attorney has an answer for.
Count, mayor and council, the answer is because in a general law city and town, which is what Fountain Hills is, because you're not a charter city, you only have, you have limited referral authority as a council. So, you have the powers that are coextensive with those granted to you by the state. The state says, here are the questions, which are like two, that you can refer to the voters and none others. The reason for that is because the Constitution already prescribes methods by which votes or things can be referred to the voters, i.e., by referendum, by initiative, or through a recall if it's for a particular council member. So, one, there's no statutory authority to do so for other questions, and two, the Constitution already prescribes a method by which matters can be referred to the voters. If that answers the question.
I recognize Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Spellic, you have good reasoning. It's, it's, makes sense, all the sense in the world, but I need to know why we're even talking about it. I don't know who brought it to the table. I, I've always felt like we had a pretty good go with the two-year term for the, for the mayor, and I don't, I don't know just exactly why we would be changing it.
Councilmember Magazine?
I can partially answer that question. I did mention it to the town manager as a possibility that we look into it. There may have been others that did the same thing.
Do you, just a second. I wanted to say something quickly. I'll recognize myself. I, I had kind of a similar question, is if we put it on the agenda, what do we see as a benefit to changing it from two to four? I, obviously, one benefit is you don't have to run again in two years, but what other benefits are there? That was my question. Councilmember Asharna?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I mean, you probably could make several pro and con arguments on, on both sides of this issue, and, I mean, I was kind of interested in discussing it as well, only because people have asked me through the years, you know, well, why is it like that? And I was here at the time, working at the paper, when, you know, our first mayor, John Cotillo, brought this up, and he said, well, you know, I think it's better the voters decide on who the mayor is rather than the council, and so they put it forth, and it sounds like the answer is the two years was just because that was kind of the default answer, and there really wasn't, I don't remember any controversy at the time about, well, why isn't it four? And, I mean, you could argue both sides that the two years has worked, and others would say, well, you know, why not four? I mean, if someone gets in and, and takes them, you know, up to a year to settle in, kind of learn the ropes, all that kind of thing, and then all of a sudden, they got to turn around and prepare for reelection if they want to run again, with four years, you know, you kind of settle in and, and you kind of get going, and, and I agree with Councilman Spellic in terms of at least let the voters decide. I mean, if we decide not to even bring this up for a vote, then they won't even get a chance to decide. I mean, maybe majority of them will say, no, we want it to stay at two. I mean, maybe majority of them will say, no, we want it to stay at two, and, and that's the way it is, but I think, you know, I'm in favor, at least, given that opportunity. It's not something of necessity or strict requirement, it hasn't been like, you know, discussed in the public to a huge degree, it's just, you know, something that's kind of bubbled up, and, you know, there really hasn't been any good answers as to why, so at least bring it up for discussion.
And I'm not opposed to letting the voters decide as well, but that's why I wanted to bring out benefits and cons and pros, because if, as they're voting, it's good for them to hear some of this. So it sounds like it was just a default to start with. Now, we're maybe going to change it, or let them change it. I guess, Councilman?
Yeah, and, you know, and I don't see this as, I mean, if we just put it on the May ballot, I mean, it goes to everyone in town, they get a chance to vote yea or nay, and, I mean, I don't see two huge, you know, political action committees on both sides forming, and, you know, big rah rah, you know, this is going to be kind of a minor item compared to, to daybreak, but, you know, if, just thought, you know, it might be a good chance to throw it out there, and, and, you know, and perhaps, if we were to propose this, then maybe we'd start, you know, not in August, you know, in December when it gets worn in, but maybe wait the two years, so that, you know, because I know we've already announced election for, you know, 2020, you know, packets have been taken out with the understanding that the mayoral term is for two, so, so maybe to avoid any kind of, oh, why is this coming up now? I mean, just have it start in 2022, and I think we can specify that, you know, just as a suggestion, so.
Works. To Councilman Spellic's point, Scottsdale is three terms, three, four-year terms, so Jim Lane, Mayor Lane, was three terms.
Vice, Vice Mayor and Council, I got a timeout signal from our Town Clerk, and there's one point I wanted to bring up with that. So, if, if you don't mind, could we really quickly just address what?
Well, I was hoping to take a, a quick break. I, I'm just a little concerned with the issue of term limits, and with it being on this ballot, and?
Right. So, I, I can actually really quickly, just answer that question. So, this issue came up for litigation in Maricopa County Superior Court a year ago. The town of Carefree attempted to enact term limits on council members. It was found to be outside of the city's scope of authority to do so by the Superior Court. Subsequently, the legislature adopted an Ordinance 9-232.05, that says that by a majority vote of the qualified electors by initiative, the voters may enact term limits. So, the Council actually doesn't have the authority to impose term limits, it would have to be by voter initiative, according to the statute. So, that should, I think, resolve that issue this, this evening.
It can't be a referendum, only a citizen.
A citizen ballot initiative.
All right, so, I wanted to make sure, Town Clerk, are there any speaker cards for this item?
No.
So, if there are no other comments from Council or further discussion, do we have a motion? By anyone?
Vice Mayor, I moved to put the question on the ballot.
And, second?
I, I move to adopt the ordinance, whichever one it is.
Nineteen-19.
Nineteen-19, that's correct.
I second.
All right, and, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed?
Well, just, does that mean 2022, then? Do we need to specify that in the motion, or?
That's right.
Or is it going to be in August?
Interesting question for the Council. We can certainly, if we want to reconsider the item, I'm sure we could reconsider the item.
Can we do that? Can we put that on the ordinance?
I mean, it would, I, I assume that it would be a, to be, well, if the understanding of the Council is for it to be effective in 2022. That's what's going to be.
Councilmember Magazine?
I believe the reason, correct me on this, that it was mentioned 2022, is because people have taken out packets. As far as I know, correct me on this, only one person has taken out a packet for May, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I don't see any reason why we can't make it effective with an extra election.
But, but the current motion is passed, or?
No, we haven't voted.
Oh, we haven't voted.
We did vote.
Yeah, we did. We just voted.
Thought we said aye.
Well, so would there have to be a? I was starting to say motion passes six to zero, but I didn't know if Councilmember Sharna was voting in favor or asking a question.
Yeah, I didn't really vote, because I was kind of waiting, you know, and then, you know, just, so, it's kind of up to the motion maker, I guess, if he wants to.
I recognize Councilmember Magazine.
If this is in order, I'm going to make, I'm going to move as a subsequent motion, that this be on the ballot in May, for the next term, for the next election.
Okay. So, so procedurally, I, because we've, we've done this before, I'm remembering, we've done this before. So, Liz, I, if I may confer with you real quick, I think that the appropriate method would be, if we need to, we need to move to reconsider the matter that was already voted on, right?
Or I can withdraw my motion.
Or we can withdraw.
In my mind, we would vote on the original motion, two separate issues, because the ordinance is specific to, I don't know, you're the attorney.
Okay, so, we're still voting, I'm going to change mine to no, so that we can reconsider, and we can redo this whole thing, so just vote this motion down, and if we vote it down, then we start over again.
What motion?
The one that Dennis made, and the one that was segmented by Mike.
Wouldn't you vote it down if it was approved?
No, we're still voting, he hasn't voted yet.
That's his problem.
So we can change our vote.
Vice Mayor, I move to withdraw my motion in its entirety, and I would like to restate that motion to put Ordinance 19-19 on the ballot, and make it effective in the August primary.
Second, all right, and all, let's have a vote, all in favor, say aye.
No, but, no, we'll, we'll vote on the, we'll vote on this ordinance change, but it will become effective immediately on the next term.
Right.
Which would be, when, when the mayor would be voted in on, in August, in the August election.
Okay, just for my clarification for minute purposes, are you saying it would be voted on in May?
It voted on in May.
To be effective?
In August.
Perfect.
Effective for the term commencing in December 2020. That's what, that's what it's going to be.
Which is what the ordinance is.
But the first, but the first is, and that's what we voted on.
Okay, so, so there's been a motion, there's been a second, are we all clear on what it is? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes six to zero.
That happened on my watch.
Oh, six, she's a, she's a.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Sorry about that. Before we adjourn, I wanted to just say thank you all, we've had, sit down, it's the holiday season. We've had challenges and other things happening this year, but we've also had a lot of uplifting and positive moments, and I want to wish everyone a very healthy, safe and loving holiday season, and a 2020 full of hope and joy, and all kinds of good things for you and your families and your friends, and I want to thank you for our goodies here, and really appreciate it, and now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yee-hoo. Okay.